I call the Tuesday, March 1st, 2011, meeting of the Arredell County Board of Commissioners to order. And if you would, pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, thank you again for this opportunity to serve you and serve your people. We pray for wisdom, we pray for sound judgment, we pray that we'll conduct ourselves in a way that will honor this county, and honor its citizens, and serve them best, but most importantly, will honor your Son, the Lord Jesus, for we ask it in his name. Amen. Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Oh, man, the flag is reversed. Somebody's reversed the flags, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'll call on Mr. Mashburn or County Manager for any adjustments to the agenda from the staff.
Mr. Chairman, there's only one adjustment that I have, and that's to add a closed session. In addition to the property acquisition item, do have an item under personnel, and that would be GS 143, 31811A6, A6, and that is for personnel. That's the only adjustment I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, are there any adjustments coming from any member of the board? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for the adoption of this agenda.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Griffith. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move immediately to appointments before the board, and Mr. Brian Duncan, the Executive Director of ICARE, will submit and discuss the agency's anti-poverty plan prior to its submission to the North Carolina Office of Economic Opportunity for funding from a community services block grant program. Mr. Duncan?
Good evening. First, let me take a moment just to thank you guys for hearing our presentation tonight. You have the information that we provided for you. It is according to statute that we present this information to the county commissioners for their review. I would like to say, in the five years that I've been at ICARE, it's not been a state priority for us to ensure that this was done. It was the interpretation of the former state director that the appointments that were made to ICARE Board of Directors via the county commissioners that would suffice. The new state director has taken another stance on that, that's why I stand before you tonight. First, just a little history. ICARE has been in the community since 1965. It was a result of the Economic Opportunity Act, and in the early eighties, Community Services Block Grant came along, under the Reagan administration. And the program is more or less created to ensure that counties offer its low-income citizens ways for them to achieve self-sufficiency. CSBG funds are the core funding of community action agencies. There's about 1,100 community action agencies across the nation. You're hearing a lot about community action agencies now in the news with all of the funding, the proposed funding cuts. ICARE is a community action agency, we are that designated agency for Arredell County. Community Services Block Grant makes up about a tenth of our funding. Our largest program is Head Start. And for every dollar of federal funding that we receive via Community Services Block Grant, we leverage about nine dollars through our collaborations here in the community. It is a, pretty much, a case management program. We employ two and a half staffs, as crazy as that might sound, but I have a staff that supervises two programs, and actually, he's with me tonight. We were charged with presenting the anti-poverty plan to you. You've been given that information, and I'm assuming that you've had a moment to review it. I do want to say that our plan was crafted based on family need surveys that were sent out throughout the community a couple of years ago. It's a three-year plan. The, we sent out about 441 community surveys via the mail, via email. We got about 27% back, and the results of those surveys ended up showing that Arredell County needed to focus on employment opportunities for its citizens, affordable housing, transportation, money management, affordable daycare, educational opportunities, homelessness, homeownership, affordable medical care, substance abuse, youth services, domestic violence, and gang affiliation. We had, we ranked each category, and obviously, the largest category was employment opportunities that was seen as a need by 57% of respondents. So we crafted our plan to make sure that we addressed the majority of these needs. Respondents also were given an opportunity to comment on other programs that were needed in our communities, those that we might not have had listed on our survey. And there was a, there was a wide variety of responses to answer that question. We are requesting the full allocation that is designated for Arredell County, in the amount of $168,924. The client service portion of that money goes a long way to assist our citizens, our low-income citizens, in achieving self-sufficiency. One thing that I do want to point out, in the days leading up to this presentation, I wanted to be sure that you knew something about our performance and outcomes over the last three to five years. In our last year, we have moved 10 families above the poverty level, with an average change in annual income of $16,286. We have placed 10 of our clients in employment. Seven of those employment opportunities came with medical benefits. The average wage rate was $8.54. Eighteen of those participants completed education and/or training programs. Nine have secured standardized housing. Twenty-six of those were provided emergency assistance. Depending on how you look at that, you know, you may question the services that we provide, you may not. I think what's important is to realize that these numbers were accomplished in a very, very turbulent and down economy. So we're very proud of the work that we've done. It compares very closely to the numbers that we met before the economy turned. And for those of you who may have had the experience of working with, working directly with clients and/or families, it's not always easy to change mentalities, to inspire those to reach for all that they can be, or to break the cycle of poverty in general. One of the ways that we strive to do that, or many of the ways, is through a variety of workshops and trainings that we present to our clients to ensure that they have the supportive services, the education that they need to assist them on their journey to self-sufficiency. Now, I will entertain any questions that you have. I know that was a very broad explanation, I could go on and on about what we do, but I don't want to take up all your time tonight. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Duncan?
I have a few questions. I was looking over your annual report, and I don't mean for these questions to come across as harsh, I just have some questions about some of the numbers. It looks with your fund balance and your cash on hand, you have about $326,000 available. You have a fund balance of $288,000. Is there a reason that none of that is being used for this, instead of applying for this particular grant, and using, because based on the amount you're rewarded, it looks like you have about 18% of what was awarded sitting available for use?
I don't have that annual report right in front of me, but I will say this, that fund balance does not represent cash on hand.
No, I realize that.
Yeah, and so, a large, a large portion of that fund balance was a prior debt that we inherited when we assumed the control of the agency.
Okay.
And that's something that I will say that I am very proud that we have reduced greatly in the last five years.
Do social services provide some of the same services to the community that you folks provide?
DSS provides, yes, yes, as a short answer, yes, absolutely.
I was also looking at the Head Start program and expenditures, and based on the number of children that you served, and the money that was allotted for that program, it looks like your average cost is about $7,800 per child. Do you know what the current market rate is here in Arredell County to service a child in the age range that you guys service?
I don't know that right offhand, but I do know that daycare, I just know that subsidy runs between $650 and $700 a month, so I'm not sure.
Our average market rate in the area is about $5,000 per child. So I just took that $5,000 rate per child, and there, it looks about, about $431,000 more was used rather than a private facility. And the only reason I bring this up is because we are in times of tight budgeting, and I happen to work for a facility that provides services to children in that age range, and we do it for about $4,800 a year, which is a little below the market range. I'm just wondering what you guys can do to try to curve expenses, because based on a market rate of $5,000, 86 more children could have gone and received services from you guys. And there was almost $18,000 in travel expenses to training, and we are looking at every single penny that's going, and so, you know, I don't mean to come across as harsh, it's just some of these numbers seem a little out of line to me, and I'm new at this, so I just have a lot of questions. But, I mean, are there areas that you guys could curve back in expenditures, in case these fundings that you have been receiving are not what you're anticipating?
All right, let me answer your questions like this. The federal government gives us the number of children that we can serve, so we're kind of married to that number. The training dollars, they do the same thing. So we can't move money out of our PA-20 to our PA-22 account.
Okay.
So, you know, it is what it is in that, in that vein. In terms of the average cost for childcare services in this county, I would, I guess my question to you would be, do those entities provide the full complement of services that Head Start provides, including the dental service, the vision and speech, that we have to pick up those costs for our children, when, if they don't have, for instance, a medical home? So those types of things drive up our cost, whereas that may not be evident in the private market.
Okay. And those children that you're serving are low-income, would they not receive those same services through Medicaid and social services?
In some cases, but not all have, have a, have a home there.
Okay, all right. And I do appreciate you answering the questions.
That's no problem at all, yes, thank you for the questions.
One more, and then I'll stop. What happens if the board were to vote no on this? Does that mean that you are unable to apply for this money, or is your presence before us just to let us know what's going on? I'm not sure what our role is in this.
Yes, and actually, your role is simply a review. Our Board of Directors gives us the up or down on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, are you very familiar with the weatherization program?
Yes, sir.
Could you tell me, it says that you're assisting an inefficient heating system. Do you all do that just for the, the low-income people that are, that own their homes, or do you do rental properties for them too?
We do rental properties as well.
What I'm getting at is, if, if your client is living in a house that someone owns, and they're paying rent to it, do you repair those heating systems for the landlord?
Yes, but he is responsible for 50% of those costs in a rental situation.
Why would we be using taxpayer dollars to go to a landlord for property that they should be making money on?
Well, that's the, the rules that we're, we're given by the state of North Carolina, so we don't have any flexibility there.
So I guess if I went and bought me a rundown home with a heating system, and I rent, rent it to someone, I could come to your agency, and you all would pay for half the heating system, is that right?
If that person qualified, then yes, we are obligated to serve.
Even if that person that owns the house is substantially wealthy?
If the...
The person who owns the, the house that's being rented is a wealthy person, they would still qualify for it?
According to the rules, it is attached to the, the tenant.
Something bad wrong with that program, I can tell you that right now.
Well, you know, there's some advantages to it as well, but I understand your point certainly.
I see no advantages whatsoever when a landlord is getting money to fix up a house from taxpayer dollars, when he should be fixing it himself. I have to fix my house up, and I expect you have to fix yours up, too.
I do, I do.
I did another question. On the report that you turned in, it looks like out of the $168,000, you guys serviced about 50 families with that money, based on the outcome measures. Is that correct, or are you anticipating serving more than 50 families?
Actually, our, our plan says that we will serve at least 50 families per year. I think last year, we serviced, we serviced 57, so we averaged about $3,100 per family in service last year.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve the request.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries 3-1. Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. This time, we'll clear the meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to consideration of the proposed fiscal year 12 North Carolina Department of Transportation's Community Transportation Program Grant Application. We'll need to consider a resolution in regard to this. Mr. Garrison?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The purpose of this public hearing is on our proposed FY12 Community Transportation Program application through the NCDOT. That application requires that we hold a public hearing in order to allow citizens' input into the application. Also, we're asking that the board adopt a resolution that would allow me, as the Transportation Director, to submit the application on behalf of Arredell County. The application's due in Raleigh on March 11th. This year, the funding requests are pretty much like normal administrative funding. We're asking for $260,000, which requires a 15% local match. On the capital side, we're asking for $201,900, and that's to replace three lift vans with three conversion vans, and also, we're having to replace a server. And the amount's a little bit different from what we published in our public hearing notice, because we got word from the DOT that they want to start doing all their records electronically, so they wanted us to buy a scanner, and we said, we'll buy it if you'll pay for it, so we put it in our application. We do get our local match for these grants through mileage surcharges and from fares that we charge our passengers. Again, I want to point out that in this year's application, the, in bold letters, it said that the funding is contingent on what happens in Raleigh and on the federal level, so if they make cuts, then we make cuts proportionately, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Garrison?
Is this the only way that this money is available to Arredell County, is through a grant to the DOT? Does this money set aside out of our tax dollars for this purpose, and then the only way counties can access that money is through applying for a grant? Is that how this works?
Rural transportation, that's, that's correct. Most of these funds are 80% federal, on the administrative side, 80% federal, 5% state, and 15% local. On capital, it's 80, 10, 10, so they are, most of them are federal funds that pass through the state, and that's how rural transportation operates.
And these matches that are required, you generate that fund through, you generate those amounts through fees that you charge to use the service of the transportation?
That's correct. We do a fully allocated cost budget, and in that budget, we build in what we need to make our, our local matches.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You said something, Mr. Garrison, I hadn't picked up on before, I guess. On capital, what, what constitutes a capital expenditure? I just thought it was the vehicles themselves, but would that be office equipment?
Some office equipment does fall under capital. It could be, well, vehicles, it could be advanced technology, anywhere from software to servers, to computers, to office equipment, furniture.
Basically, anything that's not a current expense could be classified as capital.
Right. Most of, most of what we spend, though, is for vehicles.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? If there are none, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
What? This... Oh, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing, I apologize. Is anyone else like to speak in regard to this?
Isn't this to call for a public hearing?
No. Just publicly, cut to the table.
Okay. If no one's willing to speak, then the floor is open for adoption of a resolution, am I right in that?
You're right, Mr. Chairman, so move.
Motion for adoption of the resolution from Mr. Mitchell, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Garrison. Okay, we're down to administrative matters. Mr. Mashburn, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under administrative matters, the first item is a request from the Mooresville Graded School District to approve a, a application of the North Carolina Education Lottery Proceed. Susan Blumenstein, Finance Director, will make that presentation.
Thank you. When the county issued certificates of participation in 2006 and 2008 for Mooresville Graded Schools, we did not anticipate having to use lottery proceeds to help retire that debt. However, because of declining sales taxes, there are not enough funds, last year or this year, to make the full debt service payment for Mooresville. So we budgeted some of their lottery proceeds to make that payment. This application will allow us to draw down those funds to help in this year's annual debt service for Mooresville. The amount is $530,505. There's currently $956,643 available for projects of Mooresville Graded Schools.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Blumenstein?
What would that money have been used for if it's not used for debt services?
Other capital projects that Mooresville may have. They could use them to buy technology, they could use it to purchase equipment, they could use it to improve their buildings, even just maintain their buildings.
Do you know if there's a reason why we're not trying to eliminate all this debt before we're thinking about purchasing other things? Do you know if there's any rationale behind that?
Well, the debt far exceeds the amount of lottery proceeds available at this point, and they have not, because of our declining revenues the last two years, they've not had anything available for their annual capital projects, recurring capitals such as roofs and things like that. So it will not surprise me if in their budget requests that they present for next year, they may want to use some more of this lottery money to make those improvements.
Okay, any other questions? A little bit, little bit troubling, have to use this money to service debt, it wasn't our, certainly wasn't our intent, but this downturn continues, so... Is there a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
Motion, Mr. Norman, for approval, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Blumenstein will also present a, a request to approve Budget Amendment Number 30.
Budget Amendment Number 30 does not require any new funding from the county, nor does it recognize any new revenue from an outside source. It's strictly for budget ordinance purposes. We've always paid 50% of all the employees with cooperative extension, except for one. Our 4-H coordinator is 100% county-paid, and there, well, there are a couple of part-time hourly employees that help out at the fairgrounds when needed, that are 100% county-paid. All the rest, the county paid 50%, and NC State paid 50% of the salaries. Those staff members received two separate W-2 forms. A couple of years ago, the state changed their method to what they call a send-in method. For any new hires, they would pay the employees 100%, and then they draft our bank account for our share. Beginning in January, they assumed that same role with all existing cooperative extension employees. So effectively, they will not receive a W-2 from Arredell County anymore, after this past December 10. This budget amendment just moves what we budgeted in county funds from salaries and benefits down to contracted services. And that's because our budget ordinance does not give that authority to the manager to move into or out of salaries.
Okay, any questions? Any questions, Ms. Blumenstein?
I have a question. I'm sorry, I'm full of questions tonight.
Okay.
It, it looks like, from the information that we've been given, that it costs the county about $318,420 with retirement insurance, FICA, and their wages to run this program. Is that, does that seem like an accurate?
Yes.
I just added up the total, about $318,000 to run our 4-H program?
Oh, no, 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 the 4-H itself is a, the 4-H is probably a less, I wouldn't say less than $35,000 a year employee.
Okay, and then the...
I think what you may be...
The rest of these folks work for the cooperative extension?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, the only, yes, that's correct. Plus, we've already paid six months of those other staff members' salary from our current fiscal year budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Budget Amendment Number 30.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 30 from, offered by Mr. Mitchell, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
There's now a request from Social Services Department to approve a budget amendment to recognize some additional funds for child daycare. Yvette Smith, the DSS Director, will make that presentation.
Good evening. Department of Social Services received some additional funding that I would like the board to approve tonight. In child daycare, $235,930. In the crisis intervention program, we just received another allotment yesterday, which brought that total to $359,717. Domestic violence, an additional... Domestic violence, an additional amount of $7,583. And special children's adoption fund of $12,000.
So, Ms. Smith, what you're saying is this budget amendment needs to be amended?
The crisis intervention program, correct.
Up $150,000 over what we have in our packet, is that...
That's correct. If you have, do you have $309,000? Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
That would bring it to $359,717.
All right, any other questions, Ms. Smith?
How many children do you currently have waiting for daycare services? Do you know what the waiting list is?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred?
Yes.
Do you know how many children this 235,930 will serve?
What this money is going to do is keep our current population served. We have around 1,300 children that we're currently serving, and we requested from the state some additional assistance to continue that population.
So does that mean that if this money would not have come, then you would have spent more than what you would have received initially?
That's correct. And we would have probably entered into some type of plan to reduce that population.
Okay. Any other questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve the request and add the additional amount of money.
Okay, that's approval for Budget Amendment Number Thirty-one. All right. Any questions on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Our Health Director, Donna Campbell, will present a request to approve another Budget Amendment Number Thirty-two.
I have a request to accept an additional $21,970 in emergency preparedness funds. And we'd like to use this funding to help offset some of the county's costs for the Connect CTY phone system. We'd also like to purchase a new immunization refrigerator that was going to be in our next year's budget. With this funding, we can do that right now, and I have to include that. We also want to improve the security on some of the special storage areas in our building that have certain emergency preparedness supplies in them. And so we request that you approve a budget amendment to accept $21,970 from the North Carolina Public Health Office of Public Health Preparedness and Response.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Campbell? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the Board of Health unanimously endorsed this, so I move that we approve Budget Amendment Number Thirty-two to accept the $21,970.
All right. Motion for approval of Budget Amendment Number Thirty-two from Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, I'd like to call on Lynn Niblock, who is the Director of Code Enforcement and Special Projects, to present the next item, and that is to approve in the capital project ordinance funds to construct a barn and ancillary facilities to the animal control facility.
Good evening. The current animal control facility, which is under construction, is getting closer to completion, and we still have approximately $447,168 left in contingency out of the original $3 million that was put into the project ordinance for this project. And the request tonight before you is to add the addition of a barn and some pasture area and some auxiliary services to go with the barn to that facility. And the estimated cost, which you have a cost breakdown attached to the packet, we have an estimated cost for that of $164,160 for the additional construction, including the pasture fencing and the drive and the different things that would need to go with that. And so if the board chooses to go forward with adding that to the project, we still should be able to do that and be under the original $3 million, which was allocated in the original project ordinance. It does address the 2025 Strategic Plan under Public Safety, Item Number Four, which is the funding of facilities to address growth. And it would increase the efficient operation of the animal control facility when completed. I have, as I said, a cost sheet or estimate sheet attached there. Also have a couple drawings that you should have had in your package, of a floor plan and some cross-sections and some elevations to give you some idea of what the building would look like, and also a site plan to show the general location that we would propose to put it in relation to the new facility that's being built. Also have Chris Royal here with me this evening, the Director of Animal Control, and we would be glad to address any questions the board might have.
Mr. Niblock, you haven't actually, of course, put this out to bid, so these are just fingernail estimates on your behalf, or...
They are, and quite frankly, I think the site preparation number on that table may be a tad high. That was the estimate that I got. However, I feel that there might be some savings if we go forward and put it out to bid. I'm pretty good on the rest of the numbers, though. We ran the materials list, we took it by one of the local lumber companies, had that priced.
That was the, if I were going to question a number in this budget, that'd be it. If you look at the topo lines on your layout here, that's not a particularly steep grade and shouldn't necessitate large moving of a whole lot of dirt. So not too often you see site preparation exceeding the cost of materials on the project.
I would agree. I personally think that might be a little high, and we can do better than that. However, that is the estimate I got from the grading contractor that's currently working on the animal control building itself. But you're correct, and that's one reason we located it where we did, to get it down to where the ground leveled out. Now, there is some elevation difference. It would require some grading to get the drive down to that facility, facilitate getting the trucks and the trailers with the horses or whatever type of animals they might be bringing in and out of the facility. But I feel that's, my opinion is, that's the worst-case number that you're looking at there.
Okay, any other questions?
Is there a reason why a barn was not included in the original submission?
When we originally started this project, we were somewhat concerned about whether we would have enough money to build the facility itself with the $3 million that was put in the project ordinance. Luckily, we got some very good bids due to the current economic situation for the facility itself, and they came in, quite frankly, lower than what we had or the architect had estimated on the bids for the facility. And that's one reason that we have a fairly good amount left in contingency.
And if this barn is not approved, then from what I understand, gathered from the reading, the animals will have to be kept at the old location, causing people to be split in two locations and travel and things like that. Is the land available? Do we have the land to put the barn upon?
Yes, we have the land that's down in behind the current facility. I know that's not a very large site plan that you're looking at there, but our property actually runs to about the center of that hashed area that's at the very left-hand side of the drawing. And then we still have some additional property to the south of both that barn building and the facility that we're currently building, which could be for future expansion of the shelter building if that was necessary at some future date, or possibly another building for some other facility for county use at some future date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Niblock, a question that was asked earlier was about concerning the drive going to the new barn. Is that scheduled to be paved, or is that scheduled to be gravelled?
The plan is to gravel it. It's not going to be something that, and Chris, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not going to be something that's going to be used on a daily basis. Is that accurate or not?
Well, we, no, we have to go to the barn every day.
But ask her to come to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. Yes, we do have to go to the barn every day. I did, I don't know if you mind, if you don't mind if I speak just a minute. A lot of people don't know the livestock that we have at the shelter, and I'd like to read that for... In the past 24 months, we've had five cows, 10 pigs, 34 horses, 77 goats, 47 chickens, 33 rabbits, and 37 feathered fowls.
Plus a llama. Didn't you have a llama?
And we did have a llama.
But to answer your question, Mr. Mashburn, is the current plan is for it to be gravelled?
Okay. I pose, Ms. Niblock, I posed that question to Mr. Mashburn prior to the meeting?
Yes, sir.
And if, I'm like you, I'm doing a real rough estimate. If you, assuming that that building's 48 feet long, and just using my ink pen as a gauge, you're probably looking at, from the closest paved surface, you're probably looking at a smidgen over 200 feet from the door of that facility to your paved surface. What I'd ask you to do is, I don't think you're going to spend $55,000 on site work. If you come in under this $164,000 to a significant degree, I'd like for you to do an estimated cost on paving that drive down there.
And I'd be glad to do that. What I might suggest, if the board chooses to add this to the project and give us the authority to move forward with putting it out to bid, is possibly bidding that paving as an alternate. And that way, that would give you the flexibility at that point in time, depending on where our numbers are, to make the decision whether you want to pave it or gravel it.
If you can repair that paved driveway every few years, if you put that gravel, you're going to repair it pretty regularly, so... Okay.
I like, 77 goats, that's a lot of goats and horses. Were they just neglected animals that were picked up? Or we're accepting animals that people drop off?
We have to accept animals that people drop off.
Is that what the deal is on those horses?
On the horses, some were neglected. If it's astray, we have to keep it stray 63 days. If it's owner surrender, we can call either a rescue or adopt it out.
Okay, any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion. I'm going to offer a motion, we'll go ahead and let them bid this thing out with the stipulation that they come back with some figures for an alternate on that road if they come under budget, and we'll make a decision whether we're going to do that at a later date. But I'd like to at least have a figure on that.
No problem.
Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Tracy Jackson will present Item F, and this relates to the food vending agreements that we have with Bob Barton.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, last summer, we brought you two agreements for a food vendor at the courthouse in Statesville and also the courthouse in Mooresville. And we got all those details hammered out, and the vendor started providing services. But as the warm weather went away and winter came on, he was not as inclined to provide the vending services. Part of his contract was to provide us with a privilege fee for those services, which he has not paid. And it comes to a total for the two sites of $893. Based on the agreement, we're asking that these two contracts be terminated immediately for non-payment.
Mr. Barton's been notified of his delinquency. Have you heard any response from him?
I've spoken to him, and he has received certified letter. And he advises that he was going to pay it, but he has yet to pay it.
When was the last time he's notified, Mr. Jackson?
I spoke with him prior to turning this in for the agenda item. So it's been probably less than three weeks.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Jackson? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Move that we immediately terminate the two previously agreed agreements. But any Mr. Barton and the county?
Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And the last item under administrative matters is approval of the February 15, 2011 minutes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, no announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions this evening. We'll move to appointments to boards and commissions, and the animal grievance committee will have one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint DJ Lloyd for that committee.
This DJ Lloyd has been nominated by Ms. Griffith. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint Ms. Lloyd by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I believe we have, where mine earlier is? Yeah. On our nursing home advisory committee, we have one nominee who's expressed, potential nominee who's expressed interest.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Eric Carrillo to the nursing home advisory committee.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell to appoint Mr. Eric Carrillo to the nursing home advisory committee. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Carrillo by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? County managers report.
Mr. Chairman, the only item I have is the closed session item tonight.
Okay. Leave the closed session. I move that we go into closed session under General Statute 143-31811A5 in regard to property acquisition, and General Statute 143-31811A6 in regard to personnel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.